Thank you, councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Rosendahl, Weiss, Wesson. Being here, we are still only at seven members. Councilmember Gru, please join us as quick as possible. Councilmember Parks, please join us. Councilmember Reyes and Councilmember Smith. We are meeting in presence very good. Councilmember Smith is here. So, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, I had you red down here. But you are here, so we have eight members and just awaiting Gru, Parks, and Reyes. We'll go live in a minute.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is our Wednesday, June 28, 2006, meeting. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here in John Farrow Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. Invite members of the public to come down and give public testimony at our general public comment and also on items that have been agendized for public comment or anything called special for public comment by our councilmembers. If Van Nuys is closer to where you live, you can also drive to Van Nuys City Hall and testify there via remote facility, and we are able to hear you and watch you here in council chambers. And each Friday of the month, the first Friday, excuse me, we meet down in the Van Nuys City Hall Council Chambers and invite members of the public to join us there. This meeting is broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, and also rebroadcast each evening. It's also webcast through our city's homepage at lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about the city and departments and its elected officials. You can lastly call in to City Phone, 213-621-CITY, to listen to the proceedings of the council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. We have now nine members. Thank you, councilmembers Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, for being here, pursuing to council rules on time. We have excuses on the desk for Councilmember Labonge, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Perry, who arrived late, Councilmember Zine. Those are excused absences. That would leave us with Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Reyes. If one of them would join us, we will have a quorum, and we will begin the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labonge, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. There's no objection. Those two will be unanimously approved.
Mr. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. We'll begin with our ten minutes of public comment, and we will go to Van Nuys first, where we have Marlene Goodman. As soon as we hook up the remote facility, we will take your testimony from Van Nuys City Hall. Welcome, Ms. Goodman. You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Marlene Goodman. I am Director of Animal Welfare for the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, a member of LA Elephant Alliance, and member of Senior Citizens for Humane Legislation and Education. I just wanted to call to your attention that Gita was down for more... Gita the elephant at the Los Angeles Zoo that died last couple of weeks ago. Gita was down for more than ten hours before she received veterinary attention. Councilpersons, I'm asking you to ask Zoo Director John Lewis, what did he know and when did he know it? We need answers, and we need the truth. USDA is going to be looking into this, and I really expected more participation for answers from the city council. I also would like, next time I get up and speak, for people to pay attention to me and not be walking around the room thinking of other things and saying other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. We appreciate your testimony. Next is Michael Hunt.
Let's get ready for the Matt Dowd Michael Hunt Show. You guys, hey, camera guys, you've been fading me out. Hey, let me get my fair props now.
Why don't we... Will you pause Mr. Hunt's time for a second? Mr. Hunt, if I could just read this before the public comment. During a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, there's the need for civility and expedition of carrying out the public business. When addressing the city council, please direct your remarks to the council as a whole and refrain, if you can, from personal, impertinent, abusive, or profane remarks. Please, go ahead.
So, that mean nigger's still in? All right, I like that. I like that because it's...
Sir, it does not.
What do you mean? Yes, it is. We talked about that. If you wouldn't have sold us the thirteen hundred fraudulent permits, we wouldn't be here. So, you gotta deal with it. That's what the whole problem's about. You, the city attorney, selling us thirteen hundred fraudulent permits. Let's get to the business. You really want to get down with me? I have a debate with everybody in here. You know, I don't think you can handle it. You know, if you wouldn't have sold us those thirteen hundred fraudulent permits that you did, we wouldn't be here. Let's put it on the record. That's the nigger act. And do we got a right to say it? Yes, we do.
Sir, it is not the content of what you're saying right now. We've asked you once to not be abusive to this body. Please, direct your comments to the body as a whole.
It's in the dictionary, sir. You do? Well, then you need to go sit outside and wait till my public...
I'll give you one last warning on this, sir. Please, direct your general comments on some issue that is before us, and please refrain from the personal, impertinent, abusive, or profane remarks.
Right, well, that's talking about thirteen hundred fraudulent permits, and you should give me my time back since you was talking to us. You know?
Please continue.
And that's what the whole thing is about. You guys are not giving us our due props and our First Amendment respect. And long as you guys don't give us that, then you guys got problems down here. Start respecting us as a group and as a whole. You know, stop violating our First Amendment rights, and we wouldn't be here. Right? Right. When you go to jury trial and try to change the ordinance in the jury trial, city attorney, that's like Rocky Del... Del Got To Go. What is he, a Democrat or a demo and piece of crap? You know?
All right, sir, that's your third warning. Like the microphone, please, brought down. We asked very clearly, your time is up for today. Our next speaker today is Tati Lviski Acosta, and then Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. I would just like to state that because of the recent events that took place at the South Central Farm, as a citizen, a lifetime citizen of Los Angeles, I'm quite shocked, hurt, and that's all. But I feel that that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to be here at City Council. I wasn't gonna come here today. I was just gonna do some paperwork back in Hancock Park, but I saw the headline this morning. Laura Trich is not worried about the LA Times giving away super-secret intelligence that will result in American deaths. If she is, I didn't hear her say anything about it. Laura Trich is worried about the LA City being involved in an event at Hooters with bikini contest and the LA City logo. Now, I support the LA City's involvement in this Hooters event, and I'm sorry, the LA City Council's against it. Let me tell you why. This is an insult to the women who work at Hooters. Many of the women that work at Hooters are getting college degrees, law degrees, medical degrees, CPAs. You think I'm kidding, Councilwoman Han? I'll bring the women down here, and you'll meet them. It's not you or Laura Trich that want to have in a bikini. Secondly, this is an insult to animal owners. I own two cats, one of which I adopted here at City Council, and all pet owners support spaying and neutering animals. Number three, this is a business in Hollywood. I love the liberals in LA. They're all for the rights, in theory, but when a business like Hooters locates in Hollywood and wants to do a fundraiser right here in Hollywood, LA City's against it. And what's the problem? There's no pornography. And who is Laura Trich to tell the other women in this city what's demeaning to women? And who is this woman quoted in today's Daily News? What were they thinking? What were they thinking? I can't even imagine. This is not exploiting women. I call on all women that work at Hooters and restaurants like Hooters to go to my website, melroselarry.com, email me at melroseone@earthlink.net, and if I have to, I'll come out of retirement and lead a protest to get LA City involved again in this. This is insane. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a resident of Hollywood, and I helped get elected many of the people, including the mayor of this city. And I think it's an insult to all people in this city that the LA City should feel as if there's something wrong, and I commend the animal commissioner in this city, Commissioner Box. Thank you. General man.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Don Garza is our next speaker. Welcome, Mr. Garza.
Good morning. You can see. I feel fabulous, and I feel marvelous. I came today because you, Mr. Rosendahl, are the bomb. But besides you being the bomb, that's a compliment, if you don't understand what that means. You're the bomb. You didn't bomb, you're the bomb. Okay? Now, I came today because I was assuming that the global warming thing was gonna be today, and I guess I can speak today on this as a public comment. I don't understand too much about global warming. I didn't see the movie, The Inconvenient Truth. I probably won't see the movie, Inconvenient Truth, 'cause I have this paranoia about propaganda. And... But we're given a brainstem that tells us that we need to propagate the species, that we need to survive. But we're also given white matter in our brain that listens to that brainstem, and if the human race or when human beings begin to feel that their environment is becoming unsafe, we'll find a way to make sure that we don't kill ourselves. It's called survival. That's the basic instinct. So, if there is scientific evidence to prove that this global warming and its effect is taking place, and there's a propoundance of... I don't know if there's any... A lot of evidence. We haven't been here, but maybe not that long. We don't have the patterns, earth patterns, for thousands and thousands of years. But I'm all for your resolution tomorrow. I think it's important. So, you're the bomb, Mr. Rosendahl. Well, Jam Carrey is more the bomb.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Michael Carrion is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd.
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion. I'm from the 14th District, and I don't know where Mr. Weezer disappeared to, but we have a problem in our community. We have illegal building, and the city spoke to... Sent to Ruiz, Commissioner David Lara, and I was told that everything was gonna get stopped because of illegal permits, the illegal dumping. And basically, I brought it to this council's attention, but like Ms. Han, they were too busy talking, that they didn't understand what was going on. This builder has connections with Mr. Rialde Gosa. All of a sudden, there's hands off. Mr. Lara won't return my calls. He's got somebody else calling. The permits are okay. The streets are filthy. The illegal dumping is still there, and nobody's done nothing. But the builder, all of a sudden, has all his permits in order, and now he can continue building. I don't understand that. But again, Mr. Weezer has a new assistant who states that he will not allow anybody who works for him to have proactive working knowledge of his community. I asked him to take down the illegal postings of people running for office. He said he was not gonna have his office do anything unless it was called in. Now, I have a question for Mr. Weezer. Who runs your office, Mr. Weezer? You or your new employee? Is your office gonna take proactive enforcement on anything, or are they gonna sit there in an air-conditioned office until they're called and do nothing? It seems to... I see people over there laughing. It seems that there's humor in it. But there are a hundred and fifty illegal signs still posted from the last election, which nobody's taken down. The candidates haven't taken them down. The councilman's office won't do it. I called, it's still not down. I guess it's up to the public to go do it themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Our last speaker is Mr. Dowd.
Thank you so much. I just wanna give a hootie-hoo first to my mom and my children, Jaden, Dana, and Andrew, and take authorization for that from Tom Labonge, 'cause he's up here giving hootie-hoos to Philip Tate on the mic, and, you know, he's standing here with his shirt out, chewing gum. You know, for respect or to start right at the beginning, let's not waste, you know, time talking about Melrose Larry Green's haircut. I got a message for the city attorney. We brought you Rocky Del Got To Go. Well, there's a new one now. It's a tongue twister. Couldn't even put Mike Hunt in jail. Say that five times quickly. So, you can solve this problem, you know, 'cause, see, like, unlike the farm people, you know, there is no landowner who's overriding us. This is public land of Venice Beach. Abbott Kenny dedicated it to the artists and the performers. We're trying to give you a little performance here. I know, you know, you've tried to take him through a jury trial. That's a performance. It's a huge performance. It ended up in, you know, where? Nothing. I got a form here. This is the Get Out of Jail Free card. All you need to do is sign this. It's an exemption. Constitutional requirements have been met pursuant to Spence v. Washington, 1974, 418 U.S. That's a particularized message. He's the Shea Butter Man. That's the message, is Shea Butter, and it's inextricably intertwined with the product, which is Alamine v. City of New York, Supra 979-F, supporting at Page 172. And the other one is narrow-tailoring Schaumburg 444-U.S. Just narrow-tailor a few more people back onto the beach, like 200 art and craft people, and put $2.5 million back into the community so we can spend it.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That closes our public comment period, general public comment today. If we can run through the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue Item 22 for two weeks to July 12.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing Item 22 until July 12? If not, that will be unanimously ordered. Next.
There's also been a request to continue Item 28 to Wednesday, July 5.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing Item Number 28 till July 5? Seeing none, that, too, will be ordered.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 3 are street-vacation items noticed for public hearing. Council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, we'll instruct the city engineer to proceed, and let's open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items 4 through 8 are street-lighting district items noticed for public hearing. Recommendation for council action is to continue the hearing and ordinances to July 19.
Okay, so anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's continue the public hearings and the ordinance until the 19th of July. On all of those, please...
Items 9 through 16 are street-lighting district items noticed for public hearing. These are confirming the assessments or abandoning the projects.
Anybody wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 17 through 53, with the exception of Items 22 and 28 that were continued, are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 17 through 25 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all the commissioners on the desk, please. 38 for Mr. Wesson. Any other specials, colleagues? Ms. Han? Two weeks. Does anybody have an objection to continuing Item 7? That would be till July 12? Oh, sorry.
July what?
July 12?
Fine. And I'd like to call 52 special.
52 for Ms. Han. Yes, Ms. Gruel. Gonna hold that? Call that special? Okay. Ms. Gruel calls 30 special. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none on the...
Mr. President, on Item 41, the public hearing was not satisfied in the committee this morning, and there is a card on that.
Okay. Let's call 41 special for card, then. And any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. And all items we'll be going forth with today, colleagues. Next items, please.
Items 54 through 76 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Items 54 through 59 are also commission reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold the commissioner reappointments on the desk.
That would leave council with Items 61 through 76.
Okay. And 60 as well? Do we have Item 60 in there? Have that down as a...
Sorry, Item 60 through 76.
Colleagues, any specials for Items 60 through 76? Mr. Parks?
66.
66 for Mr. Parks. And we do have some cards, I believe, as well.
Could we ask to get consideration for that out of order because of the number of people that may be here?
Sure, 66. As soon as we get through it, we will see if we can take that one out of order. We have cards on 54, 55, 56. Those were already called special. 66 has been called special. 67, we have a card on. Call that special for cards. 69 for cards. 70, 72 for cards as well. And 76, we have a card on as well. All right. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 77 and 78 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, Item 79 is an item for which public hearing has been held, and the applicant did submit a letter to the city clerk this morning requesting a continuance to July 12.
Okay. So, any objection to that? If not, we will continue that to July 12. Next item?
Item 80 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on Item 80? Open and close the public hearing. Mr. Parks, do you wanna call that special?
To make a technical amendment to Number 80.
Has that been circulated, or do you wanna call it special?
It was circulated, no, just verbal.
Oh, you want... Okay, go ahead.
It's just a change in the amount that should be distributed. Should be changed from $792,294.53. Should be changed to $396,142.26.
Okay. With that changed, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well. So, colleagues, we have a number of items. There's fourteen commissioners that are being appointed or reappointed today. We will go to those as the next order of business, but before that, Mr. Parks asked for Item 66 to be taken out of order, so why don't we go ahead with Item 66 if there's no objection? I want to read one other statement as well before the agenda items, "to further the orderly process of this meeting in a timely manner and thus avoid the possible loss of a quorum. If a member of the public wishes to speak on more than one item, he or she shall limit his or her remarks to a total of six minutes per meeting unless the council grants additional time by a majority vote. A member of the public may allocate time between items in one minute increments up to two minutes." to two minutes. Members of the public speaking on a particular item shall constrain their remarks to that item or be ruled out of order." So with that, we've been told that, I know we had a PD that was going to come down on this item...
Yes, that's what we were advised.
And I believe they need about a 10-minute window.
Okay.
Pause 10 minutes on that, we'll go through the commissioners. Okay. We'll go ahead and do that, then. If we can take up the first commissioners.
The first commission appointment is item 17, and that's the reappointment of Mr. Matasima Asparza to the Lasers Board.
All right. Colleagues, with your permission, I think what we'll do is we'll take up the commissioners by kind of subject area, so folks who are all related to housing will come up together, planning folks will come up together, but with Lasers, we have a unique board and unique topic, so we'll have Mr. Asparza on that. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks, our Budget and Finance Chair, on the reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say that Mr. Asparza has been not only a member of the board for a short time, but also has been a member of this community and an activist. We've seen him here on issues dealing with L.A. Theater. We've also honored him in the past as it relates to his involvement in the movie industry, in which he's been certainly well-documented, his efforts. He, at the committee, expressed not only an interest in this assignment, but was on his way to, I believe, Stanford to go and take a class so that he has a better understanding of all the issues that deal with the pension funds. We expressed some of the concerns about the issue of smoothing, we talked about issues of dealing with the city's contribution, and he certainly not only has the interest, but appears to be well-prepared for this assignment, and I'd ask that we give a unanimous vote for his reappointment. And maybe, Mr. Asparza, you may have a comment that you'd like to make to the commission, council.
I did just attend, members of the council and chair, a fiduciary college course at Stanford University, which was a three-day course that further deepened my understanding of my obligations and responsibilities, and I intend to continue to get educated so that I'm better prepared to serve the city in this position, which I find very important and of great interest.
Well, I know, last time you were here, almost all the council spoke on, in glowing terms of you and your service, so in the interest of time, we will let that speak for itself. And last time, we're very excited you're here for a second term. And if we can open the roll on the renomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mr. Asparza.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next, if we can take up item 18, which is DWP Commission. And just to remind members of the public, we've had public hearings on this that require motion from council to reopen them. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry, our Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee, on the renomination of Ms. Hogan-Rouse.
Thank you. She's done an excellent job and really embraced the issues put before her through the Department of Water and Power, brought a new level of energy and enthusiasm, and I would heartily, heartily recommend, or re-recommend her for a reappointment and ask for a unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gruehl?
Just be brief, because we spoke last time, but I think we have a bunch of people who are here in support of RSE, and I just wanted them to stand. I know staff and family, all of them that are here. Oh, big group! I teased her, and I said, "They all came here to oppose your appointment because they want you to spend more time at work." But that's not the case. She's done a great job. I know she came in saying she didn't know everything about DWP, and sometimes that's the best way, is to come in with a clean slate. And she's done a great job. I'll be brief, since we have so many commissioners, but I wanted to recognize all the people who came on her behalf today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, we've had the opportunity to discuss on the record some of the issues that faced the Department of Water and Power and the community of Los Angeles, and some of the history with that department that your family has and firsthand experience. I personally would describe the Department of Water and Power as a department that has a lot going for itself, they have a tremendous responsibility, and they do a very, very good job. But I would also describe them as being a handful. How would you describe your experience so far being a board member of the Department of Water and Power?
I think, to say the least, it's certainly been a challenge, an eye-opener, one that I think is a love kind of relationship, because, you know, I think I acknowledged before that my father was DWP, and I'm wearing his truck driver pin today, he started out as a truck driver. And I acknowledge where management is and how different things are from the inside looking out, and trying to remain objective around what I hear on the street and what I hear at meetings. And I think the greatest time I've spent over the last six months really is education, and I see that happening a lot more going forward, because, you're right, it's a huge animal. I consider it sort of like one of those elephants that you're trying to turn, and you have this one little stick trying to get them to turn around, but they don't move very fast. But I see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I believe that the staff has been so dedicated over the years and committed, and I think it's a good working relationship with this new board that the council has supported.
I'm glad you bring your perspective to the board, and I'm glad to see that even after all those volunteer hours that you put in the meetings and beyond the meetings, that you're willing to continue to do that. We need you, we appreciate you, and thank you so much for reapplying.
And I just want to say thank you as well, Councilmember Cardenas. Our first meeting, when I first started to have this conversation, was with you when you were Chair of the Energy Committee. And one of the things you said to me was, "Don't be afraid to ask questions. Just ask the questions, even if you think you know. Go ahead and ask." And that has stuck with me, and I think that's why I get so many answers, sometimes more than I want, but it has meant a lot, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Rosendorf?
President, first of all, it's good to see you again. You used to be on my show, and you were a candidate, and this, and that, and the other. You heard one of the public comments, I did put a motion in today on global warming, and I look to your leadership with probably the most futuristic group, which is DWP, which has really been working on it. Any thoughts, off the top, about global warming?
Well, you know, I said to the commission about a week and a half ago, I was up late one night watching PBS, watching Al Gore make his comments about his movie, and one of the best things you can do is really focus on renewables. And that's exactly what we're doing, so I felt very confident there, because the mayor's commitment to go from 20%, 20% by 2020 has now been updated to 2010, and I think that's the most critical thing that we can do here in Los Angeles, is make that happen. So I am continuing to learn about that. I know that we're sending things over to the council and the Energy Committee, and I'm hoping for support so that we can get these things moving, because that is the most critical component of, I think, what we do going forward.
What do you think of this whole thermo-energy out there that we're looking at to capture that?
Well, you know, one of the things that we do know is that if we take on these new kinds of energy supplements to the traditional energy sources, it means Los Angeles and L.A. DWP will be a leader, a trailblazer. A lot of unknowns are out there about what kind of outcomes there will be. What we do know is that we'll minimize the use of traditional energy, which is causing the global warming. So I think in the thermal area, you know, we've made a commitment to include that as part of that 20%, and I believe it's going to be, it's going to work for us in the end.
I mean, I'm excited about Jan Perry's leadership on the committee, and I know she'll be providing that leadership from a council perspective. What's your sense on putting those bortes on the houses for the sun?
Well, you know, I took the tour, you know, I think I've had more tours on energy in the last six months than I have in my entire life. But, you know, I did the energy tour on the solar panels for the houses, and there is a company right here in Los Angeles that's the world leader in panels for roofs. And so one of the things we're talking about is how we can make that useful right here in our own backyard. So I actually think it's a wonderful idea, I am supportive of it, and we're trying to figure out now how we can begin to make that link happen to our residents here in Southern California.
Now, DWP is a real family tradition for you. Would you explain that pin on your lapel?
Yeah, I decided to wear my dad's truck driver pin. He started out as a truck driver for DWP back into a segregated department back in 1953. And he ended as a manager in fleet operations. So I'm wearing it today. He has a 43-year pin that I wore the last time, and I thought today would be...
What was his name?
Forrest Hogan. Yeah, I was named after him, that's how my mom got for RSE.
I see. Well, thank you so much for stepping forward again...
Thank you.
...to provide leadership for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Well, thank you for RSE, for putting yourself forward again. Let's open the roll on your renomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's take up next, the next two together, for the, for LSA and the Affordable Housing Commission. Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the...
Yes, item 19 is the reappointment of Ms. Rebecca Avila to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and item 20 is the reappointment of Mr. Pete Navarro to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Okay. Mr. Wesson, as the Chair of Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, we have both the LSA and the Affordable Housing Commission appointees. Actually, we just have LSA one. Do we have, is Mr. Navarro here today? All right. We'll turn it over to you either way, Mr. Wesson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President and members. You know, it's one thing to complain about things, it's another, it's another thing to actually get involved and to try to make things better. We have a young lady with us today who has done that, and basically, the mayor has recognized her expertise, and he is asking us to reappoint her. So I would make a request to all of my colleagues that we do this in a unanimous fashion.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Becky, would you like to say anything about your service, or...
No, thank you very much for considering my reappointment. It has been a busy six months, and I look forward to continuing the work we've begun.
Thank you. Brief and to the point. We thank you for your service for many years to the city. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, please.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations. And Mr. Navarro will be reappointed as well on that. Next, let's take, do we continue item number 22 already, Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry, Mr. President?
I have a note here about, we continue item number 22 already?
Item 22, a request to continue that for two weeks.
Let's take up item 21, then, Mr. Washington.
That is the reappointment of Mr. David Washington to the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes, our Chair of Planning Land Use Management Committees. Not, well, I can certainly speak to Mr. Washington's character, a friend of mine as well, and somebody who I know has done a very good job in a short term on the West Los Angeles Planning Commission, want to thank you for that service, and thank you for all that you've contributed, and recognize Mr. Weezer as well, from our Planning Land Use Management Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yesterday, as the Vice Chair of Plum, we heard Mr. Washington's proposal to be reappointed to the Area Planning Commission. As you know, he was before this council not too long ago, but we had a thorough discussion on his thoughts and ideas as serving, for how long?
Five months.
Five months. So I ask for unanimous approval. We believe he brings a unique perspective to this commission. We look forward to your continued service to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on Mr. Washington? Let's open the roll on DEWASH, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right. Next item, please.
Item 23 is the reappointment of Mr. Michael Lawson to the Board of Airport Commissioners.
Why don't we take 23, 24, and 25 together, if I can ask also Caitlin Kim and Diana Torres to come forward as well? And we'll recognize the Chair of our Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee, Ms. Hahn, who had all these in committee. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, I thought it was a very good, thorough conversation with each of these commissioners in our committee just about an hour ago, and I won't take as much time as we did there. But I thought it would be interesting, really, to the rest of the council, and certainly to those watching on Channel 35, if each of you would sort of answer the question about, you know, you've all served before, you're going into a reappointment mode, you know, kind of, what are the issues you believe we should be focusing on at the harbor, the airport, and the convention center, so that the city gets a sense of what the Citizen Commission really is going to take some good, hard looks at in the future? And we could start with Ms. Kim. Again, much briefer than we were in committee, but I think it will be of interest to everyone.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hahn. It's been a pleasure serving on this prestigious board, and I had to deal with the learning curve and all the issues and challenges that we had to go through. And if I may break down our main issues into three categories, they are security issues, environmental concerns, and as well as the business development. Our theme, our mayor's theme, our city's general theme concerning the port is green growth. So not only growing, but we have to grow green. So we've been particularly focusing a lot on the seeking cooperation from sister ports in overseas, such as Shanghai, Hong Kong, Nagoya, and as well as Busan, to join in our effort in cleaning up the global environment. And in terms of security concerns, security measures, we do have budgets set for this program. We understand there is a federal budget as well as state budget for this program. The challenge has been how to, how to work together and create a desirable system that can work for the port, not just the port of ours, but the port at the point of origin. That's been the concern, and I understand, this morning, there was a news report, news article, newspaper article concerning about the recovery plan, and Councilwoman Janice Hahn brought that issue up to us this morning, and that is a very important issue that we have to focus, and I can, and promise you that we will work on those issues in coming up with a detailed plan in the future.
Well, I want to thank you for your service. I think you've learned a lot in a year, and I am really impressed that you have, in my opinion, really focused on the three issues which are of vital importance to me as well: security, clean air, and economic development. So I really appreciate that. I know the mayor's going to have an announcement this afternoon about finally getting our port to have a specific plan on how we have clean air, so that the port doesn't continue to be the largest polluter in Southern California. And you've also made a commitment to me that you will ask staff to take a good, hard look at our waterfront development plan. There are many of us that do feel like it's come to a halt, and we are anxious to see that move again. So thank you, Caitlin, for your service. I think you're doing a fine job.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, too, I want to thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve on the commission. The areas that are most important are, again, security, economic development. With security is the support and improvement of the LAX PD. In terms of economic development, the primary issues are twofold, one short-term, one long-term. Short-term is upgrading the current facilities, making the LAX the principal gateway to Los Angeles, and making it, and improving the grounds there. Long-term is focusing on the mayor's commitment to regionalism, which we are moving forward on a rapid basis. And we're just, the staff at LAX is just so fantastic, and it's been a wonderful experience for me, and thank you very much.
Good, and we also appreciate your service, and as we talked about in committee, we all have concerns about the summer traveling public. We want to make sure there's enough TSA screeners, we want to make sure that those lines, you know, are not problematic, not only for convenience, but certainly as a possible, you know, terrorist target, long line, so we really want you to pay attention to that. And as we said, we really want the commission to focus on this community benefits package that was hours and hours of negotiation with stakeholders that actually allowed us to move forward with our LAX master plan, and we hope you pay attention to that issue as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Convention Center Commission. It is a very exciting time downtown, it's a very exciting time at the Convention Center. There is significant industry enthusiasm...
Why don't you move the mic a little bit closer?
There is significant industry enthusiasm about the L.A. Live development and the There is significant industry enthusiasm about the LA Live development and the other commercial development downtown in the Convention Center area. We're seeing, we're seeing greater enthusiasm among our, at the Bureau in terms of selling the space. We're seeing greater enthusiasm at the Convention Center itself. We're focusing on the core strengths of technology and trying to attract technology and entertainment business to the Convention Center. And it looks very promising for the future.
Well, again, thank you for your service. And, you know, tourism is a huge industry, second-largest industry in Los Angeles. We know that every tourism dollar that comes really helps, particularly helps the general fund. So we, you have a really big, important job in attracting tourists, making sure that the amenities are competitive with other large cities that they may be attracted to go to, particularly in terms of conventions. So thanks again for your service, and we know you have a big job ahead of you.
Thank you. They should be not only competitive, but better.
I stand in support of all three of these appointees being reconfirmed to their very powerful positions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, my Chair of this great committee, Janice Hahn. Well, we have three different groups represented here. We have the harbor, we have the airport, and we have the tourism, okay? Just so the public understands that. Let me just start with the, with the airport issue. It's controversial right now about the lines. We were told by TSA that everything was hunky-dory, and we know it isn't hunky-dory. I demand that they come before us, even though they're the federal government, we're all connected to the people, and they got to tell us what's really going on and what they're really doing to do something about it. Would you give us your own opinion about airport security?
The lines have been problematic. They are a security problem. They are a security risk. We've been told that. And it's critical that we apply the resources necessary to get these lines down. And I agree with you that we need to have answers as to why it hasn't been done, and just a simple response that the lines are history is totally inadequate. Our staff is working diligently on trying to do what they can to alleviate the problem, but it is something that we can't do alone. So we absolutely need the cooperation and responsiveness from the TSA. And I agree with you that we need to get them down here to respond.
Great. And let's see if they'll respond to us. You know, we on the local level always respond to the federal government. It's about time they responded to us, especially when it comes to security issues. Next question has to do with the infrastructure of the airport. We had an airport settlement, hallelujah. We're talking regionalism now, not just stuffing everything in one spot. And we approved the infrastructure update. We talked about a people mover of sorts, and we talked about a few other things. How are we doing on the green lights and moving forward about $2 to $3 billion worth of infrastructure?
We are moving forward, but we, but when we settled everything, we really came back, took ground zero. And we have to start over and look at exactly what it is that makes sense. And there is a lot of things that have been coordinated, including coordination of jurisdictions. I think the mayor's reinstitution of the intra, intra district council, I believe it's, I forget the name of it, but we have to work with the various jurisdictions that are going to be involved in this.
The regional airport authorities, we're talking about, which he appointed me to to represent the city.
That's exactly right. I think the reinstatement of that is critical to this, to this effort. It is not going to be a quick turnaround, but it is something that the staff is focused on, that we are focused on, that we're going to make happen. In the meantime, we're going to do our best to upgrade the, our current facilities and make this a world-class airport again.
That's wonderful. You know, the Green Line is a mile and a half from LAX. The people of the past didn't put it in for whatever peculiar reason. How are we going to tie the people mover into the Green Line and give ourselves some mass transit into LAX?
We are working on that project. We have, there are a couple of things that are on the table, but again, it has to be tied into, and we are tying it into, the, our efforts to upgrade the airport on a short-term basis. One of the things that was problematic with respect to the master plan is that we spent so much time on it, we didn't take the time to upgrade the current facilities. And we've got to do that in coordination with the long-term goals of bringing in the people mover and extending the Green Line. All that is on, is definitely on our agenda and in the forefront of our minds here.
What's your take about the LAU police and their capabilities and, and safety issues regarding LAX?
LAU police are outstanding, absolutely outstanding, and we need to support them and give them all the authority that they need in order to continue to do the job of keeping the airport secure.
And on the authority side, would you be for certification so that, you know, they can have the ability to provide overall police services?
100%, absolutely.
Thank you so much. And thank you all three. You're terrific, and I'm sure our colleagues will all support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Anybody else wishes to be heard? If not, let's open the roll on the three nominees, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Congratulations on, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We now do have, I believe the police is here, so we're going to take item 66 now out of order, and then we will return to the commissioners. We appreciate the nominees' patience, and we'll get to that. Mr. Parks called 66 special, so I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering, can we have the public comment? I think there's some cards first.
Let's go ahead with the public comment on 66 first. I can just remind folks to further the orderly process of the meeting in a timely manner. Unless avoid the possible loss of a quorum, if a member publicly wishes to speak on more than one item, he or she shall limit his or her remarks to a total of six minutes per meeting unless the council grants additional time. Again, there's a need for civility and expedition in carrying out public business, and so when we address the city council, please direct your remarks to the council as a whole and refrain from personal, impertinent, abusive, or profane remarks. Like to, our first speaker is Michael Hunt.
Thank you back on the record, you guys. I too support the domestic violence cause too, and the law enforcement with it. I think that it's a very good issue. I think that it should be supported by everybody in here, and I really, really think that it's a good thing. So at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Matt Dow right now.
Do you have a card in, Mr. Dow, on this item? Or are you yielding your time, Mr. Hunt?
I think he's yielding, he's yielding time, I think. Thanks for that. Yeah, I just want to express my support. I love it when the city council's doing things for the community. And also, another little message on the shirt, "We go out of our way to provide public comment." Eric Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wendy Vaughn is our next speaker. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Wendy Vaughn. I'm an attorney at Neighborhood Legal Services. I represent low-income residents of Los Angeles and particularly victims of domestic violence. Back in 1976, our office represented a woman by the name of Lulamee Thomas. We brought a lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles and the Police Department in 1979 regarding some concerns that we had with respect to the police's response to domestic violence. As a result of that lawsuit, we entered into a consent decree with the city in which the police agreed to issue standards and procedures with respect to domestic violence and to make felony arrests when possible in the cases of domestic violence. And I can say that in the last 30 years, we have made great progress. Our offices continue to monitor the police department's response to domestic violence and have been very involved in training and collaborate closely with the police. However, we were recently concerned about the change in the reporting of domestic violence crime statistics from Part I to Part II crimes. And I know that that's an issue here before the council. We have three main concerns about this change in the statistical reporting. One, we're concerned that the community may have a perception that domestic violence has actually decreased. We're concerned about the allocations of resources to domestic violence in our community and what the change in statistics might appear to be to funders and also to governmental agencies. We're also concerned about the fact that these changes in the way that crime statistics were reported was made without any input from the community partners and without any approval of this council. We think that changes in crime statistic reporting should be approved by the council and highlight the need for uniform statistics with respect to domestic violence throughout our city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bernita Walker is our next speaker.
I am involved with the Los Angeles City Task Force on Domestic Violence, where I serve as an alternate for Councilwoman Jan Perry. I also am the Executive Director of Project Peacemakers. We operate the DART unit at 77th Division and at Newton Division. I am also a part of the Los Angeles County Council, Los Angeles County Domestic Violence Council, where I serve as the Chairperson of the Religion and Domestic Violence Committee. In reading the report, first of all, I would like to thank the officers, lawmakers, city attorney, and district attorney for the interest in addressing domestic violence. Especially, I would like to thank this council for your recognition of the urgency with which domestic violence needs increased intention, attention, which it comes, when it comes to reporting. Last year, this council voted to fund DART units in all 19 divisions of LAPD. However, as you know, the funding was only available for four continuing and two new units which have yet to be started. The funding, which is greatly welcome, is not enough to fully staff the unit at 77th R. Newton. This concerns me when I look at the presented stats and know that we could be drastically, they could be drastically changed with assistance with adequately funded DART units. It is scary. Not only do I speak, well, I don't speak for them, but I speak for myself as a survivor, knowing that if I made a domestic violence call, that may not be responded to. Knowing that even if it was responded to, there may not be a report taken. That frightens me. And it frightens me for all of the clients that we work with, especially in the 77th and Newton Divisions. We also work with Southeast and Southwest, although it has been limited because, again, the lack of funding. I would hope that you would consider finding in some way to help us meet and do something about these stats that have been presented to you in this report. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much for your testimony as well. Karen Earl is our next speaker, and then Norma Foster, and then Susan Millman, and Carol Tetcher. Tetcher.
Good morning. My name is Karen Earl. I'm the Director of Genesee Center, which is the oldest domestic violence intervention program in South Los Angeles. Proud to say that that organization's been part of finding solutions for the issue of domestic violence. I am here to say that I'm very grateful that the Commission on the Status of Women taking on the task of collecting and analyzing data relative to police calls and domestic violence. It is a comprehensive report, and what is important is that we are all people of goodwill. We all see the signs on police cars with statements about domestic violence being a crime. But all stakeholders must be at the table when procedural guidelines are developed to ensure providers are part of the solution. Apparently, particular divisions have more DV calls but less follow-up by police as compared with communities with fewer DV calls to begin with. And communities like the one I serve are traditionally unserved and underserved, and we must be vigilant about these matters. In reading, in reading the report, the word disparity appears several times in just the introduction. Again, unserved and underserved areas know that the word disparity means, equates to fewer resource, resources, and I know we can do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Norma Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilmembers. Today, I represent the United Nations Association Pacific Los Angeles Chapter, and I'm co-chair of the Community Advisory Committee for the Status of Women Commission, and also serve with many women's organizations throughout Los Angeles and the state of California. In looking through the proposal, we'd like to say that we need a transparent tracking system to identify the magnitude and response to domestic violence. We also need to become much more strategic in how, in how domestic violence resources are allocated. Finally, we recommend that the commission work with the mayor's office in the planning process and in funding this proposal. Thank you for hearing these recommendations, and any time that I have, I yield to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Susan Millman is our next speaker. Welcome, Susan.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this morning. I'm Susan Millman. I'm a lawyer with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I work with victims of domestic violence every day and have been for the last 20 years. I represent them in court. I also chair, only until July 1st, the Domestic Violence Task Force of the City of Los Angeles, which is the only entity in the city whose sole focus is domestic violence. Created in 1994 by the late Dr. Marjorie Browdy, its mission is to advise the city council on issues concerning domestic violence, including legal advocacy, policy, program development, legislation, and victim services. And we serve as a resource for all city departments on issues of domestic violence. One of the first actions taken by our group back in 1994 was to make sure that all city vehicles were equipped with bumper stickers that say, "There's no excuse for domestic violence." So every time you see that sticker, think about the task force and remember that we are a resource for this city council. The task force is comprised of a diverse, impressive array of domestic violence experts from community-based organizations, nonprofit service providers, law enforcement, city departments, and commissions, all engaged in the daily struggle of combating domestic violence. The task force voting membership consists of an appointee from each councilmatic district as well as representatives from LAPD, the city attorney's office, and other city entities. The task force provides a forum to explore issues of domestic violence from many different points of view, because all these people play different roles in assisting victims to escape domestic violence. And these points of view that constitute the complex safety net of service providers, including shelters, counselors, criminal and civil lawyers, police, emergency response advocates, which we call DART, to help the city council to coordinate its response. And following up is Carol Tanta, who is the incoming Chair of the Domestic Violence Task Force.
Ms. Tanta, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carol Tanta. I represent Councilwoman Bill Rosendahl on the city's Domestic Violence Task Force. And I cannot begin to tell you how excited I am to hear you spend so much time talking about domestic violence in city council chambers. I understand this is one, but one of many issues that you confront every day and have to deal with. And however, as Susan just noted, each one of you has an appointee to the task force. So here's my question to each of you. How many of you contacted your task force representative this week when this issue came up before council? They are your experts. You appointed them. This is a resource for your city council. Use it. We are here. We have asked our, our appointees to council to contact your, their respective offices on a quarterly basis. You know, that's not as easy as it sounds. I just spent three weeks playing phone tag with Mike Bonin, who is Councilman Rosendahl's chief deputy, and he's a personal friend. Took me three weeks for us to get together. An initial topic of concern for the task force is the implementations of the city's policy in support of employee victims of domestic violence. We recently suggested that we would be happy to train council staff, and indeed, council members as well, on the policy. President Garcetti has accepted that challenge, and we hope to schedule that training in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the entire task force. And are there any outstanding appointments still in the task force?
Yes.
Okay. We will work with colleagues, or maybe a colleague or two here that's still not appointed, somebody to the Domestic Violence Task Force, and we will work with you to make sure, if that's one of yours, that you take advantage of that amazing resource. Edith Perez is our final public speaker on this.
Good morning, city council members. As some of you know, I was president of the Police Commission several years ago, and I had the privilege of serving under three chiefs of police. And I'm extremely disturbed that domestic violence is not being treated with the utmost care that it should be treated with, as we did in years back. Unfortunately, it is a situation that police officers respond to more often than not. And for it to be relegated to a lower rank within the police department is, really reflects badly on the city that we are going to a draconian approach toward domestic violence. I think we have to be honest that it exists, and I think we have to count it accurately. And I think that this is part of the, this is the tip of the iceberg. I think there's other issues going on in how we count crime. So I don't understand how we, as a city, are going to reduce crime if we are not accurately counting it. I think we're misleading the public that we're reducing crime. And what disturbs me most, as I continue to have wonderful continuing relationships, not only with command staff at the police department, but also with the rank and file. The rank and file now have a rumor going on that they have to reduce felonies to misdemeanors. If that is the case, that is extremely disturbing, because we will not- If that is the case, that is extremely disturbing, because we will not get at what is our true picture of crime to bring the resources to bear in reducing crime. And I think it's just part and parcel of a bigger problem in misleading the public, and we, as citizens, should look at that a little bit more carefully.
Thank you.
And investigate it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. That closes our public comment pursuant to our council rules. The chair of the committee takes precedence, and we'd like to recognize the chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Weiss. And just before Mr. Weiss starts, after this, we'll return to the commissioners, colleagues. We have six more commission appointments after this, so we will take those up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Assistant Chief Gascon to come forward. As he comes forward, I just want to say thank you to the advocates from the domestic violence community who are here today. And I think, as all of you know, it is very clear, this is a council that is 100% in support of your efforts. We are also fortunate to have a mayor who believes very strongly in the need to combat and police against domestic violence. We have a police department, a police chief who shares that commitment. We have a police commission who shares that commission. We have Commissioner Shelley Freeman, who's here today for her reappointment, and if you don't know her, you should get to know her, so that you come away with total 100% confidence in the commitment of the commission on this issue. And I also want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Parks, for ensuring that we have had this discussion. I'm going to give Chief Gascon the opportunity to speak. I just want to tee it up by saying, reminding everybody, the reason that this matter came to council was because the LAPD changed the manner in which it was reporting crimes, Part I and Part II crimes, to Washington under the UCR, under federal regulations. We asked our chief legislative analyst to investigate this and report to us and explain whether there was any leeway in the way, manner in which the LAPD could report domestic violence crimes to Washington under the UCR. And I just want to read to you a paragraph from their report. This is from Mr. Miller's report to us today. "The CLA contacted both the California DOJ and FBI about the level of flexibility in complying with UCR guidelines. FBI staff said that if LAPD were to revert to the prior method of reporting all domestic violence crimes as aggravated assaults, those numbers would be disqualified. California DOJ confirmed that the 729 law enforcement agencies in California participating in the UCR program report assaults, including those related to domestic violence, as instructed in the UCR handbook. California DOJ confirmed that, quote, 'domestic violence-related assaults should not all be classified as Part I crimes.'" I just want you to have that background, because no one should get the impression that the LAPD has done something here that is not required by law and not consistent with the common standards and practice of law enforcement in this country. That is what they're doing. At the same time, I know firsthand of their extraordinary commitment to dealing with this issue. Chief Gascon, we'd like to give you the chance to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Perez, and then council members, good morning. I'd like to discuss two things. First of all, I want to have a brief discussion over the UCR reporting procedures, and then I'd like to go into the domestic violence issues. As Mr. Weiss indicated, as the CLA report indicated, the LAPD is not doing anything that is inappropriate. As a matter of fact, if you really wanted to be technical about it, we were reporting crime inappropriately. And frankly, any funding or any resources that flow from an intentional misrepresentation of crime numbers, it really represents fraudulent practices, and we have to make sure that our numbers are accurate. In our department, in our city, for reasons that I'm not quite sure, although on what they are, we started to misrepresent our crime numbers sometime in the 1980s, when it came not only to domestic violence, but there are other issues that we've also noticed that we were misrepresenting our numbers. It's important to realize that the difference between a Part I and a Part II crime has nothing to do with how much attention the police department is going to pay to the problem or the fact that it is reported. As a matter of fact, Part II crimes are also reported under UCR guidelines and are provided to the federal government. They're just in a different category. So when we're talking about Part I, Part II crimes, and the problem that we had in the case of domestic violence is that we started to report simple assaults as aggravated assaults, if they were part of a domestic violence incident, violating the federal guidelines. We have to understand that the federal guidelines are established so that there is a uniformity nationwide of how every jurisdiction reports crime. This uniformity is critical as a nation in order for us to have a clear picture nationally of what our crime looks like. It is more important, when you have a major city like Los Angeles that has such an impact over the national numbers, to ensure that our numbers are accurately reported. It has nothing to do with the effectiveness of our investigation, how much emphasis do we place on the education, the prevention, and the enforcement and prosecution for individuals that get involved in domestic violence incidents. Our commitment to eradicating domestic violence in the city, and I believe that one day this will occur, is unwavering, and we have had plenty of evidence to show that we're committed to doing so. However, to believe that we can continue to misrepresent the numbers and even make the argument that by misrepresenting the numbers, we're seeking additional funding, is not only disingenuous, but quite frankly, is fraudulent. And there will be other partners around the country that are following the rules that, quite frankly, will be very upset if they knew that we intentionally continue to misrepresent what the numbers are. I'd like to move now to the area of domestic violence in more detail. First of all, I'd like to say that I know there has been some questions about the report that came out from the Commission on the Status of Women as to some of the anomalies that were observed in analyzing three particular areas, Southwest, Seventy-seventh, and Southeast, again, Central Pacific, and West LA. I want to begin by saying that we do not have all the answers, and I believe that this are very complex things, that we want to continue to work with the Domestic Violence Task Force. We want to continue to work with all the partners out there, stakeholders, victim rights groups, and others, in order to continue to learn how to best deal with domestic violence. We recognize that there is-
Could you hold it just one second? If I could ask everyone to please limit their conversations, particularly here around the horseshoe.
Thank you.
Shh. Thank you.
We want to make sure that we continue to evolve. We recognize that this is a field that is growing. There's a field that our understanding of what causes domestic violence, how to deal with prevention issues, how to deal with the victims, quite frankly, how to deal with the suspects, is continuously evolving. And we understand that there is a need for us to continue to learn. So I want to start by saying that we appreciate that the report is a good report. It's a report that guesses a place to start working, but there are other mechanisms, as was indicated earlier. We have the Domestic Violence Task Force, which is staffed by very dedicated volunteers and people from the city, as well as the police department, that has been addressing many of those issues. Some of the factors that we believe that may have had an impact in the reduction of arrests and that was noticed in this report is that, to take you back historically through this process, in 1997, legislation was developed coming up with the concept of primary aggressor. The police department put out a publication that discussed what the procedures was going to be and what the, how to identify a primary aggressor. It is complex, and I have to tell you that in doing our research, we found out that actually the police department did not start to train the trainers on this issue until mid-1999. Consequently, in the early stages, we had many times where officers were arresting the two parties involved in the domestic violence. If they got a radio call, they got to the radio call, they couldn't figure out what was going on. They were arresting the victim, which mostly was a female, and they were arresting the suspect, mostly a male, and they were treating both as if they were suspect, and it was a mutual combat situation. Consequently, we arrested many, many victims that should have never been arrested, and the numbers were inflated. As we started to train in the area of primary aggressor, trying to tell our people how to determine who was really the most culpable party in this particular incident, new law came into place in 2001, and we started talking about a dominant aggressor. We started training into the dominant aggressor concept in mid-2001 and primarily completed that training by 2002. So if you take and if you look at our domestic violence numbers, especially if you take a historical approach from about 1998 through 2005, you're going to see a department was struggling with new concepts that initially was probably over-arresting and arresting many victims, trying to learn how to deal with us as the legislation was progressing. That is one of the factors that we believe, and by the way, I'm saying one of the factors. I'm not saying that that is the only reason that it can explain why we see some of the anomalies. We really don't have all the answers, but we believe that that is certainly a contributing factor. We believe also that the comparison involves areas that are very unlike one another. It is very difficult to take Seventy-seventh, Southwest, or Southeast and compare it with Pacific, West LA, or Central area. One of the things about our city is our diversity. We today have 19 geographic areas. They are, in many cases, almost like a mini-city on their own. They're very different in their socioeconomic makeup and all the issues that impact policing realities in those communities. So again, those are factors that have to be taken into consideration. It is our position that the best way to deal with this problem is to continue to work with the Domestic Violence Task Force, which is a council-recognized body and works for you, police department, any other groups that we can find, to continue to evolve. We know that this is an evolving field. We know that there are other areas, for instance vandalism, that if it's related to a domestic violence incident, to date, it's not being categorized as a domestic violence-related incident, and probably it should. And there may be other things there that we should be doing. We should also be learning on how to educate the public further. So there is a lot of work that needs to be done. We're not here to make excuses for ourselves, and we're not here to say that there is not, that we have arrived. I don't think we'll ever arrive in this area. We're going to continue to evolve. But I think it's important to understand that when it comes to the reporting of crime, not only are we doing the right thing, we're doing the legal thing. And if we don't, we, as a city, are being dishonest. And quite frankly, I think at some point, we can open ourselves for severe criticism and possibly even the accusation that we're acting fraudulently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that presentation, Chief, and-
No other comments. You do have an additional three minutes as chair, if you would like. You're fine. Okay. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Could I ask the staff from the Commission on Status of Women that come up, the city attorney that come up? Let me give a perspective that doesn't start in the middle of the picture. Having sat at that chair in the 80s and dealt with this council, the reason that the city of LA has this reporting mechanism is not because the UCR are not going backwards to say what would happen today. The city council approved a settlement called the Lulamay Thomas case. In there, in that settlement, and that's what the young lady talked about that came to the microphone, the city agreed as part of the settlement to report these cases as felonies and to make them Part I. For 20 years, they did that. The mistake, in my judgment by the department, was they considered, once they reviewed the guidelines this year or last year, that it was a mistake for 20 years. It was never a mistake. The council made a policy decision in 85. To give you some context on this is that I talked to Daryl Gates, and many of you may remember him as chief of police. He sent me a short email, and he said, "You're correct," in stating that the Lulamay Thomas case that was litigated over several years and finally settled while I was chief of police did require the department to report these crimes as felonies. The settlement was approved and ratified by the city council. These are troubling cases and perhaps require additional look by the city, but it would seem necessary to conform to the past practices until a new resolution and agreement can be made satisfying both the city and the plaintiff's representatives. So the real issue is, and let me ask Paula, you've looked at the motion, you've been here in the city for a while, you as this Status of Women, what is the position that your commission took on the motion that came forward? Can you hold my time?
I don't have the actual motion in front of me. However, the Board of Commissioners for the Commission on the Status of Women did take a formal motion supporting the Part I, Part II crime motion that you had put forward, council member. As I stated before, particularly in light of the report that we did and the need for transparent information and data on domestic violence.
Could you remind us of the report you did, and what was the genesis of that report?
In October, I believe it was 2004, the Los Angeles Police Commission asked to join with the Los Angeles Commission on the Status of Women in doing a report on the nature of domestic violence in Los Angeles. They asked us to report statistical data on the number of calls, arrests, adjudication, et cetera. And in fact, the board took a formal action in December 15th, 2004, providing the commission with data for years 2001 to 2003.
Okay. And give us a thumbnail of what you discovered in that report.
Again, you know, using the data that was provided to us by the Los Angeles Police Department, and again, I think we have, in our report, we have stated that the data was difficult to come by and incomplete and insufficient in some manners, again, pointing to the fact that there is a need for centralized, for a centralized data tracking system. You know, what we did find out, however, is that there was a 3% increase in the overall number of domestic violence calls, however, a 7% increase in the amount of crime reports, and arrests decreased 22% from the years in question. With the trend data showing an overall decline in the police department's follow-up to domestic violence-related requests for service with incident crime reports and arrests, we looked at the geographical spread or concentration of these requests and their response rates. And as I said last meeting, what we did find is that the police department divisions with the highest number of domestic violence calls had some of the lowest rate of calls that resulted in reports and arrests. Now, understanding there are many reasons why this may have occurred, we were not asked to analyze that, but in fact, to look at the data alone. That was what the police commission asked us to do, and that was what we responded to. All data was electronic. It was sent to our GS mapping, as well as given to a consultant for analysis.
And you said earlier that the material came from the police department. Did you also have meetings with them about that material?
Yes, I did. I had several meetings with department representatives, and as I mentioned to you, I have several emails with data from department representatives, and I also have an official report from the police commission with data. So I do have to say, relative to the CLA's report, that it is not true that we did not consult or work with the police commission. So I would just like to say that for the record, and this is the first time I've seen that today.
Okay. Thank you. Let me ask the city attorney, have you looked at the Lulamay Thomas case? You may have been involved with it when it was settled.
I actually was not involved with the settlement, but I have reviewed the document. However, I should make it clear, I'll introduce myself first. Maureen Siegel, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I am on the criminal side of the office, not the civil side of the office, and Lulamay Thomas was handled originally, I believe, by Lou Unger and Donna Weiss-Jones in the civil side. I am, however, somewhat familiar with its terms.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions about this settlement. What was, who was the settlement between the city of LA and the plaintiffs, or was it between the police department and the plaintiffs?
I brought it with me, but I hope someone is here from Police General Counsel. It was between the city of Los Angeles and Lulamay Thomas at all.
Okay. And then, on the history of, and you've dealt with other consent decrees and lawsuits, when lawsuits expire, does the city in general, for good faith, continue with the process of the requirements of those lawsuits?
The practice varies greatly depending on circumstances. For instance, in this case, Penal Code Section 13-700, et cetera, 13-701 and 02, were enacted, I believe, in 1986. It codified many of the requirements with regard to training, standards, procedures, and policies, and mandated that police departments throughout the state propagate certain standards and training requirements, which LAPD subsequently did. So although this- So although this consent decree expired in 1989, the standards and policies required by the consent decree were actually adopted in perhaps even a higher form, if you will, setting the bar a little higher statewide in about 1986, with amendments subsequent to that, up until, including 2000, I believe.
Okay. Is your awareness of whether the Thomas case, is that a class action?
I'm sorry, I am not aware of the status of the case.
We get several lawsuits, some of them are for institutional change, some are for monetary gain. What would you label this lawsuit?
This would have been a change in policy and procedure.
Okay. If the council approved those changes of policy and voted on them, would that policy change even though the requirements of the settlement expired?
You know, if the law changed, if the state law changed, that may well supersede whatever the original agreements were pursuant to the lawsuit. And that's actually what happened. But for the particulars of this lawsuit, it might be a very good idea if someone from Police General Counsel were available to respond. I'm sorry.
If I could interject from last week's discussion, my understanding was there was a request for our office to discuss the domestic violence arrest statistics and our office's response to that on the criminal side. So I'm calling our civil attorneys right now, but I don't know if they would be facile with the issue as posed.
Let me ask you, Dionne, if the City Council made a policy, who can change that policy?
The City Council.
A department can't change it.
Just off the top of my head, they should not be able to.
They should not be able to. So if the council voted on something and said, "This is a policy of the city," then it should come back to the council to change that.
That's normally the way it works.
Thank you. I'll push my button again, and we can go on.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, you know, I think that's certainly my concern, is, you know, this City Council adopted this policy as a result of a settlement and a lawsuit, and it's been a good change for the City of Los Angeles, and it's been a good change for women and children in Los Angeles, because we began to look at domestic violence crimes as seriously as we were looking at some of the other Part I crimes. And I think that's what we became sort of known for in Los Angeles, and I think we were proud of that in Los Angeles. And it's, and I too share my council colleague Bernard Parks' concern that, you know, we made that as a policy on the City Council, and then the police department went and changed that, really without coming back to the full City Council. They did that before on their response to how the police department responds to burger alarms, and it caused quite an outrage in this city. I think the message is, you know, we are policymakers. We are the body that really looks at how we behave as a city and how our departments behave. And for them to make this change, to satisfy, you know, a federal requirement on how we report crimes is unfortunate, because I think, you know, and it may be a coincidence, but since we've changed how we report domestic violence crimes, we've heard that they are getting a little bit less attention. I think I heard that the response times had changed a bit, and the arrests and incident reports have changed a bit. I was in Watts last Monday, and we were receiving reports from our senior lead officer on the part I crimes that happened in housing developments. And, you know, it looked like crime was going down. But of course, domestic violence was not being reported, domestic violence crimes were not even being talked about. And yet, we know that in some of our public housing developments, that's a problem. And I think what's of concern to me, certainly as a woman, is that we know that domestic violence crimes certainly lead to more serious crimes. They do lead, unfortunately, sometimes, to homicide. And so, to make this change, to satisfy a requirement that just so that all cities report their crimes equally, we can compare large cities to large cities, I think is missing a very important thing, that when we changed domestic violence to be reflected as a Part I crime, a lot of things changed in the city. It changed how we thought about it. It raised it to a status that we took it very, very seriously. And I think women and children certainly did better as a result of that, that we took that crime seriously. So if we have to feel like at some point, we need to comply with this federal, you know, requirement of reporting, then I would ask that we have a sep -- that we as a City Council maybe authorize the department to, you know, we do our own reporting, we do our own statistics, and we have them do that reporting of domestic violent crimes in a separate category, but it is made available every time we talk about Part I crimes, every time we talk about crime statistics in Los Angeles. Domestic violence then becomes sort of its own category, because we can certainly ask for our own reporting, we can ask for our own statistics, but to leave that out now, every time we talk about violent crimes in Los Angeles is a huge disservice, and I think it's an insult. I think it's an insult to every woman and child who has been the victim of domestic violence in this city. And I really strongly object to the department making this change, certainly without our approval. And maybe the direction we go in is to have our own set of reporting, so we can continue to make this crime something that Los Angeles takes very seriously. And hopefully, the funding and the response and the attention follows that statistic.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. And I understand the passion that so many people have about this issue. They're right, everyone is right to be passionate about domestic violence. I don't think that's actually what's going on here. And if I could ask the CLA to come forward, and Chief Gascon as well, I'd like to give you a chance, Mr. Miller, to discuss the Lula May Thomas decision. Colleagues, you have here a CLA report, and I would really encourage you to read it. I'm just going to read a couple sentences from the CLA report. "CLA examined the text of the settlement of the '85 Lula May Thomas Class Action lawsuit and contacted the retired lawyer from the City Attorney's Office who handled this case. As part of the settlement, LAPD entered into a consent decree to establish new procedures for responding to domestic violence crime. As important as they are for ensuring LAPD's proper response to domestic violence, they do not govern LAPD's reporting of domestic violence crimes." Mr. Miller, can you shed any light on the questions that have been raised about the Lula May Thomas decision and whether it governs the precise issue posed here about reporting to the state and the feds? Hold my time.
Well, my understanding of that decision, and you are correct, we did have to contact a retired lawyer that worked on this 20 years ago. But my understanding is that by and large, it did not deal with much of the issue that's discussed here in terms of reporting. There is, there was a state statute at the time that broke out domestic violence reporting requirements, but it had nothing to do with whether it was a Part I aggravated assault or whether it was a simple assault or a Part II crime. It simply broke out domestic violence no matter whether it was Part I or Part II. So in essence, very specifically in answer to your question, it had nothing to do with whether or not the city was going to report domestic violence as Part I crimes.
So this settlement that has been discussed is, does not, not only does it not legally control the issue we're talking about, it does not legally relate to the issue that we're talking about, correct?
That is our understanding from the attorney that worked on it, yes.
And Chief Gascon, I'll give you a chance to respond to some of the things that have been said as well.
No, absolutely. First of all, it does not address the issue of Part I, Part II crimes. I think, unfortunately, there is some misunderstanding of the agreement. Furthermore, we have continued, not only because of the agreement, but because it's a statutory requirement to report domestic violence crime to the Attorney General's Office, and we do it. We do it on a monthly basis. It matters now whether it's a Part I or a Part II crime. We are doing it. I don't know where the misunderstanding has come from, and I'm really sorry, Mrs. Hahn, that you have that information, because it really has nothing to do with Part I, Part II crimes.
I also want to give credit where credit is due, colleagues, and note that when the CLA did their research on the Lula May Thomas decision, they contacted the City Attorney's Office and the LAPD. The City Attorney's Office didn't have a copy of the settlement or any of the related documents. The LAPD had all of the documents and the settlement, because it matters to the LAPD. Mr. Miller, has the council ever taken an action or set a policy relating to the reporting of these crimes or any other crimes?
Not that I'm aware of, certainly not with regard to whether they'd be reported as Part I or Part II. I mean, Part I or Part II crimes are defined as they're defined.
Let me ask both of you to comment on a final issue. It's in your report, Mr. Miller, where you say, "Since domestic violence crimes previously had not been identified in the reporting, the additional reporting that LAPD is now doing provides more accurate data to the providers who rely on it for conducting their own research and for seeking grant funding." LAPD affirms that none of its data reporting procedures has any impact whatsoever on the way in which domestic violence crimes are actually addressed by LAPD. And can you just expand on those points, the reporting issue and on the funding issues?
Previously, as I understand it, all domestic violence crimes were reported as aggravated assaults. So what PD has done is broken out those and reported on those separately, both as Part I aggravated assault crimes and Part II crimes. So that is the reporting issue. We have tried to determine, and we have not determined, that any grant funding related to fighting domestic violence is contingent upon them being Part I or Part II crimes. We're still looking into that, but to date, we have not gotten information that if domestic violence is reported as a Part II crime, that those statistics are not used in determining grant eligibility.
Yeah, I think it's also important to know that whether it's a Part I or a Part II crime, the prosecution of this case is, the investigation of this case is not going to be impacted one way or another. The DA's office has their own guidelines as to what they're going to file in the case. When they're simple assault cases, regardless of what you call them, they're going to be referred back to the City Attorney's Office. Quite frankly, many times, they're going to be referred back to the City Attorney's Office, even when it's a clear felony. And we have a tremendous relationship with the City Attorney's Office, and they do a wonderful job in working with our investigators to prosecute these cases. We work with the service providers. So the reality is that this whole thing about a Part I, Part II crime really is not impacting the way that we service the victims, and certainly not impacting the fact that the information is being recorded and is being provided to whoever wants the information. And I think, again, that's really important to understand. It's not being swept under the table. If it's a Part II crime, it's still a crime, it still gets prosecuted, and still, whatever the courts are going to do with that particular crime is going to occur.
Colleagues, I just would encourage you, if you have questions about this, to read the CLA's report that Ms. Culp prepared for us. It's very comprehensive, and it attaches all of the relevant documents. Look, the issues have been raised here in good faith. We're all concerned about domestic violence. Every elected official in this city is. But it's very important that we not send a dangerous message to the community. If we send a message to the community that somehow LAPD is not receptive to claims of domestic violence, then we can have the horrible effect of deterring people from making reports in the first place. It is already hard enough for people who are victimized in these sort of circumstances to pick up the phone and call the cops. So let's make sure that the truth gets out there. Please read the CLA report, because that's where it is, and let's get the word out to the providers that the LAPD is committed to dealing with this issue.
Like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I rise to thank everyone here at the Senate table for bringing this issue forward. The last time we met, we had a different set of questions. The CLA report is very clear. It recommends that the City Council instruct the LAPD to report to the City Council with recommended changes to methods or procedures to reporting crime data prior to implementing them. So that's understood. For me, the focus here is how are women being treated when they are violated, when they're victims of crime? What's the environment they experience within those minutes, within that hour, in which this occurs? I think your report brought forth that type of focus. We were able to blow up through a microscope, we asked the questions, and we're hoping to get answers. In this CLA report, I didn't see an answer to my question, which is how were we, how are we treating the victims? Once an incident occurs, are we putting them in the same hallway as their attacker? Are we putting them in the same room? How are we treating them, knowing that at one time, our facilities were so small that our own officers were changing in the hallways, because they had no room? Our new facilities are being redesigned. Did we address that particular function? And how we comfort, how we heal these victims? I did not see an answer to that in the CLA report. Whether, you forgot to write it down when I asked that question when I first was concerned with this issue, I'm still concerned with that issue. So I would like to know how we're going to get a response. Does it come from the commission? Does it come from the police? Does it come from the CLA? I'd like to have an answer.
Well, I'll start off. I think the answers to those questions certainly need to come from the commission and from LAPD. The focus on our report was on the issue of the changes in reporting. And I do understand you have those concerns. I am aware that the commission has a report that I understand is still in draft form. But the issues of what happens and how victims are treated and how the perpetrators are treated, I think the commission and LAPD need to address.
Okay. When will be able to get an answer? When do we see some response?
Councilmember, again, the CLA report this morning is the first time I saw that, and I did hear what you said last week, and we are in discussions with that. And I guess I will defer with LAPD, because we would be very happy to work together and working with some of the advocates on that.
Yes, certainly, we'll be happy to work with the commission. We would suggest also that the Domestic Violence Task Force be involved in this process, because they are your body, and they certainly have a great deal of expertise. We're welcome to work with any of the stakeholders that want to work on this issue. We're very committed, not only to providing the highest quality service that we can to the victim, but quite frankly, to continue to evolve and to learn. So we're more than happy to get together, develop a report, and come back to you if you give us, say, 60 days, I think. Would that be enough, Lori? If you give us 60 days, we'll come back and give you a comprehensive report about what are the things that we're doing with the victims.
And I thank, again, I thank you on behalf of all those women who find themselves in an unfortunate position, where we can at least provide an environment for them where the healing can begin and not be in a very awkward, uncomfortable, if not dangerous place after an incident occurs. And we're building the facilities now, we're designing them, and that's an oversight that should not be allowed, and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And before we call on our next speaker, Mr. Rosendahl, City Attorney, would like to make a comment on the record.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is just a reminder to council members that today's item number 66 involves the report entitled "Law Enforcement Response to Domestic Violence." I believe the CLA report is a broader issue today, and so if we could limit our discussion to the domestic violence aspect of it and LAPD's response.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. When I heard Marjorie Browdy, who's now looking over us, I could not sit idly with this significantly serious issue. I'd like to ask Carol Tanto to come up, who is head of the Domestic Violence Commission, to comment a little bit. But, you know, perception becomes reality. It's as simple as that from my end. Domestic violence is totally unacceptable, I can't call it Part I or Part II or Part 10. The issue is, domestic violence is unacceptable. So our data has to be clear, our appreciation of it has to be clear. And I'd like to ask Carol, help us understand, from your perspective, one who deals with this issue every day, your opinions on this.
Okay. I should tell you that I am a frontline worker. I do emergency response with Pacific Division. I've been doing it for nine years now. Domestic violence is an incredibly complex issue. Incredibly complex. The criminal justice system is not the only solution to helping victims of domestic violence. That is where the Domestic Violence Task Force does excel, and we have a myriad of experts on that task force. And I encourage you to, again, to use this as a resource. If you want to talk about victim services, how victims are being treated by, in the police station and elsewhere, come talk to us, because we can tell you about that.
Is there a difference between Part I and Part II? Part II to you?
In my work with LAPD, I see no change in the service being provided to victims of domestic violence that I'm working with in conjunction with LAPD. Absolutely none, as a result of the change in reporting standards.
Thank you very much. Wanted to get that on the record. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. I would like to hold this item on the desk for just a moment and take out of order items 57, 58, and 59. There are, on consent, there are no speaker cards on any of those items. So if there's no objection on that, I'd like to take those items on consent. Seeing none, I'd ask Flir to open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. All right, we will go back to our other item.
Yes.
And our next speaker is Ms. Gruel. Ms. Gruel, you're our next speaker.
Thank you very much. And I have not seen the CLA report. I know we're trying to get a copy now. Someone else got a copy. They're making for us. And I've been listening to questions. One issue that I think is important for all of us is to recognize that domestic violence is at the top of the list for many of us, and how important it is to the women and children of Los Angeles. And I think that's been expressed by many of the speakers today. And the fact that we're having this extended conversation is a good thing, because it is a recognition of how important it is to all of us. I had a couple of questions, because in some ways, I think we're not all in a different position at all, the positions that people are stating today. One is, what do we have to do to meet the federal guidelines on the UCR? If that is the rules, and we've been doing it correctly or incorrectly, that's one piece of it. But the other piece is, how do we ensure that we have the accurate data and the reporting requirements? And I think the third piece is, how do we ensure that from the police officer's perspective, from our city attorney's perspective, all the others, that it is considered a serious issue? We do, I go to a lot of meetings, I think, like Ms. Hunt said, where you go and the police officers report Part I crimes. They don't really talk about other kinds of crimes at all. And so that is what people hear. How do we, and I guess I'm asking both the police department and the commission and the city attorney and CLA, still do what we need to do, which is report the federal in the designation in which the federal government has outlined, at the same time, have the data available at the same level as a Part I crime for the public and for us? And I'll answer the question, and the one, just last one thing is, and again, it's a, whether the police officers believe it's perceived or real, or the domestic violence community feels it's perceived or real, that it's been diminished now by going to a different level, it's something we have to deal with, because it is a perceived position that people think the city is not having as much focus on it, and how do we address that? My understanding is that the report that the commission has provided is a draft. It's a draft. And so that what's supposed to happen next, and this may be in the CLA report, is that CLA, city attorney, LAPD, the Domestic Violence Task Force, et cetera, can comment on it, maybe give additional data that for whatever reason wasn't, whatever the issue may be, and to come back with something that could address the issues that we're talking about today, again, meeting the federal guidelines, but also having the separate thing, which Ms. Hunt talked about, which is our own kind of reporting, but then the perceived or real implication that has for the public.
I'd like to just respond to that, councilmember, because you're absolutely right. You know, again, this was a stab based on the concern from police commission and our own commission, to really look at data in a way that we had never done before. And if I can just, you know, quote the commissioner, Corina Alarcon, "The purpose of doing this was to develop a comprehensive report that would indicate areas in which the city can improve education and allocation of resources related to domestic violence." So if we get back to the root of why we were doing this, and I just want to say, this was on the heels of the fatal killing of Officer Lozarga, that the police commission, of course, made this even higher on their radar screen. So we are very willing, able, and want to work with all of the entities to get a report to the council that really looks at domestic violence in Los Angeles. And we need the correct data to be able to show arrests to adjudication, because that's going to show the true picture. And you know, as you go to your districts, what women are saying to you and others are saying to you about domestic violence. So we need in a snapshot. Data's there, it's just all over the place, and that's what we sort of found. And our attempt is to put it in one place, so we have a comprehensive report.
And so the plan is that you will come back. You will, police commission, police department, everyone will have their, and then a different report, I would assume, because there's a lot of issues that have been raised today, will come back with that input.
I would support that, and I can't speak for everybody here, but...
No, we would definitely support that, but it's important to understand, and even the report indicates, there is certain amount of data that the police department does not control. I mean, the district attorney's has their own reporting mechanisms. We do not always know what the final outcome of an adjudication is. So it's important to understand that we are fully engaged and committed to working with what we control, but it's also important to understand the areas that we do not control. I want to also add that the point that you raised, Ms. Gruel, about reporting this very upfront, so it's very clear, as a result of our discussions, my personal discussion with the Domestic Violence Task Force, we actually alter our profile, and now we have a separate line underneath the Part I crimes that actually includes totals of Part I and Part II domestic violence crimes, and puts it right there on the profile sheet. So it's right on the front, it comes out every Monday morning, and that was a result of a suggesting and discussion with the Domestic Violence Task Force. So I want to say this again, we're very committed. This is serious, we don't take it lightly. We understand the significance of allowing domestic violence to go undelved with. We also, quite frankly, many times get into other criminal activity through the domestic violence doors. So, you know, many of our felons that commit many other crimes are also espousal abusers. So we're not taking this lightly at all.
If I may just comment on behalf of the city attorney's office, of course, we will cooperate with any ongoing reports on this matter, but I think it's really important to focus on one of your questions, which was, how do we make sure, regardless of Part I, Part II, that these crimes are getting the appropriate attention? City attorney's office only deals with Part II or lower. And I think it's important for the council to recognize that the city attorney's office has the largest vertical prosecution team dedicated to domestic violence prosecutions in the nation. We work very closely with LAPD on training, on legislative proposals, on new and inventive, innovative procedures and policies. We've always been in the forefront. We will continue to be in the forefront. And thankfully, the council has supported us, and I know DART teams have got to be on your agenda.
Yes, they are.
Which goes to Councilman Reyes' concern with regard to what kind of services we're providing to victims on the very front end. But the council has a lot to be proud of in this area.
And I want to say that as well. And I think at this opportunity, again, not only are we talking about it's an important issue, but it's clear that all of the departments here, including LAPD and city attorney and the commission, feel that it's an important issue and at the top of our list, and that we have been a leader in the country on a lot of avenues. And so in that vein, can we always do better? I mean, I think that's what we're here to talk about today are their items. And so, has the city attorney commented on the draft report yet? Were you, are you a part, anyone in the city attorney's office help in drafting that or see it before it was released and made comments on it?
We saw, we were a part of the process in terms of providing statistics. We saw an initial draft. The office has not formally been provided with a subsequent draft, although I read Bernita Walker's on the way in. So I've seen it in that respect.
Okay. Because I think that as we look at the CLA's report, I think it has a recommendation about change to methods or procedures for reporting crime or implementing them, that we ask them to report to the council. I think what I'd like to see again is that that broader of every, the actual report, the draft report, have comments from the various departments and that be incorporated in a final. That would just be my amendment to that.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to go on the record as saying, somebody, I ran the census for the city of Los Angeles, and I understand how thin the margins are for the many nonprofits and the network, Recovery Network for Domestic Violence, and worked with Genesee for many years, and I'm glad that Bernita spoke today. And some of the folks in the department may not realize how critical the gathering of statistics is as it comes out the other end of the pipeline. As we approach the federal government and try to create more integrated approaches, domestic violence integrates with homelessness and increasing number of women on the street because of domestic violence, and that may be tied to substance abuse, and we try to file creatively and be proactive in the way that we seek money, so that we can continue to not only keep our heads above water, because we're barely doing that, but to increase services to people who are absolutely disenfranchised. So folks who are out in the field and have to do the paperwork, while it may seem like it's an inconvenience, actually, it translates into something so much greater, because that is the foundation upon which we build to be able to get funding from the feds. And that's not something that we should have to negotiate if we, these are the simple actions that we can take to actually deal with the issue of domestic violence. It's not overly complex.